Ready, Michelle? Good evening. Commissioner Wirth, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Present.
Commissioner Alguier?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
Thank you.
Well, we have a number of minutes ready for approval if anybody would like to make a motion or anybody that wants to pull any of them off of our packet. We have eight sets here. One of them is a closed set, and we've already handled that.
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. We now have approval of the agenda and any late additions. The clerk and the administrator have recommended that we remove consent item number two and late addition request number three. Do we have any other agenda deletions or additions?
Two and three.
Late addition, three.
Okay.
Yes. Could I have a motion?
I would move that the agenda be approved as amended.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. Thank you to the public that has come this evening, and this is the first of our two public comment sessions. You have three minutes at this time if you would like to come forward and sit at the table and make public comment. Just raise your hand, and we'll welcome you. Bill? You came with a help today.
Do we hear home township and then why not make it life simple? And where we don't have to trust anyone, we verify everything in the whole United States starting in the new economy. One person will vote on vote one day allows for no doubt. Black box machines, you can't trust them. Got my DVDs again, millions of years, they're a global front. Big difference in the world too, we don't need anyone here, anyone in the schools. This handout on the front, that's not part of it. Finally got pasted in there somehow, but that is a ballot, I believe, in Georgia. And look at the markings on the back. You can't just print those off. Those are printed specially, and you number them, I believe. You could number them, I believe I heard that said, but it's got this background. You know, I asked here, now when, during the test, if I, I heard other people could just copy ballots and run through them, they'd go through them pre-test. And he said, no, that won't work. Well, can I try it? No, you can't try it. It worked elsewhere in the state. So this is what we need, where we don't have to trust people, where we have cameras and we verify everything. Now, this is the Alex Alderman report, and it's just the first six pages. And I'll just go right back to the back page, is that one, page six, it's numbered, page six of 96. It says, bottom part, they're not sufficiently secured against technical compromise to withstand vote altering attacks by bad actors who are likely to attack future elections in Georgia. They used to mean, they use it a little differently than we do, but what's in our black box? Why doesn't possibly has the same similar stuff in it? Hostile foreign governments such as Russia, which has targeted Georgia's election system in the past, and domestic political actors can compromise to the same extent and as or more easily than they can place similar weaknesses, including readily bypassed user authenticity authentication, susceptibility to malware that spreads from the central point to machines throughout a jurisdiction, even easier to exploit technology that is simply to, simply to investigate and not apply. Despite the addition of a paper trail, they can change individual votes and most election outcomes without detection.
Thank you, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment? Mr. Makowski?
Good evening. We're here to continue the process of getting answers and probability for each subject, individual subject. Board of Commissioners, May 11th, 2021, first voting decision. This looks like the commissioners at that time need their power to hurt taxpayers and to address the problem. We watched this all for many meetings, and it looks like there's a lack of love or charity among the commissioners, prior commissions for charity. And we may not know that, maybe for a non-assisted reason, you know, or maybe just playing dirty politics. We are very impressed, you know, Chairman, and reading very clearly at the last committee meeting, which was identified really, really, very advised, what the commissioners did and where we're at. But the only thing missing is we're going to continue to waste time, and we are quite sure that the research we found out that the October 10th, 2020 meeting, we had a big statement made by Chairman Wessel. Why would we approve these positions knowing that we don't have those answers and knowing that we don't need these positions? Since then, we have not seen any justification for these positions and for doing what the commissioners did on the case. Also, at the same meeting on October 10th, the clerk was asked about the modification law. He stated that you have no plan and you have not involved the players. It may be intentional, it could be you have not included the players that are doing the work. This is a dangerous road you are traveling. Crocker is very concerned for the county. She's complaining that the shift can be made, absolutely, and she believes the commissioners are choosing the wrong way to handle this. And the end result, which we are witnessing two years later, is the result of the commissioners. They've been a very damaging and very expensive journey so far by not halving this process and continuing on, and we will continue this wonderful years when these positions were not necessary, it could have been handled much better. Again, it's never been hoped to figure out why these positions were needed, and we all commissioners continue on supporting this process in an empty vessel, an empty vessel with no justification needed necessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Any other public comment this evening? Yes?
Good evening. I'm Amy Weimer, and I live in Lakeview, Illinois. And I'm the co-chairman of the National Whistleblower Committee in support of resolutions of 2021, and I mentioned that a couple months ago. And so we're going to be working on that, our committee, about a week, there are whistleblowers, and we're cleaning up the land records. And what we're doing is we're looking for our constitutional sheriffs to help out because the FBI, the FCC, the DOJ, all the alphabet agencies are standing down while our land records and voter records are being manipulated. So what I'm doing here is giving you my memo to each one of you. It's got, each one of you has a name here on this one. And I'm also giving you Who Owns Dominion machines? This is something for not Dominion, Who Owns Dominion? And you can see here, under schematic, that we're concerned with both Hyde Harvest, which is owned by Hunter Biden, that is laid out on this schematic, so I'll get back to you. Other business I wanted to address is the family signed letter that I gave you a while back. And this is a tri-party agreement between a drug government, Fannie Mae, and state or attorneys in the taking of lands. And in here, they are, they say, every law firm who signed this agreement agreed to keep the true party interest of the government confidential while pursuing land takings. For those performing bankruptcy work, attorneys agreed to keep the government hidden on proof of claims. So this is a leaked letter from the Massachusetts Supreme Court. It has the clerk's name on here, and this is the unredacted copy, and I will give this to you, the clerk, so that will help you. And I also want to mention my voting records. I got my individual history from the Michigan Bureau of Elections, this is Scott O'Gee, and I have no idea how to explain the jurisdiction. Apparently, there's 13 records, and I voted 13 times in Leland Township, which is false. Half of those times, I voted in Cleveland Township, and my Cleveland Township records from 2010 to 2016 are falsified because it's saying that I voted in Leland Township.
Thank you, Chia Triana.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening? Yes?
Hi, my name is Anadi Conrude from Maple City, and I'd like to support what Bill said, one person, one vote, one day, one ballot. I would like to go to bed on Election Day, knowing that my vote wasn't diluted by people that had been dead for 20 years. And so I support everything that he has said, and we've got to clean up the voter rolls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
Good evening. John Hunter, Leland Township, District Two. I've been in this seat before. I'm aware of the three-minute rule, thank you very much. And while I can ask questions, I personally do not expect an answer. But I believe that in a more private setting or conducive setting, some of you commissioners should ask questions for two, and you deserve an answer for two. As mentioned in our local paper, and I more fully explained in the attentive minutes from the June 6 Finance Act Committee meeting, there are two commissioner comments that I would like to address. Chairman Wessel goes to great lengths to give a very clear and concise explanation of the 2022 law, and accounting of challenges that arose by this reorganization, the challenges that have been met and the challenges yet to come. Well over 400 words in summation that an interested layman, such as myself, could easily understand. And this brings me to my dilemma. Replaining Chairman Wessel, Commissioner Lautner commented in around 40 words, poor clothes, that she thinks it was very opinionated and disstated.
Mr. Hunter, please make sure you address the entire board. Okay, thank you.
Then I should just say one commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
All right. And this one commissioner doesn't think it was necessary, this one commissioner thinks more could be said, but this one commissioner does not think more should be said right now. And considering this commissioner is the last remaining member of the board that voted for this reorganization, it's hardly a surprise that this commissioner would still be objecting, or was essentially the outcome of his own commissioner's actions. And what is it this commissioner cannot mention? Will there, will a time ever come that this commissioner can provide some clarification for comments? Is there some type of material weakness, deficiency, or heaven forbid, suspicions built around the county government or staff? Or is this just a dark cloud somewhat over the horizon that only this commissioner can see, promising rain, yet not delivering a single drop? Inquiring minds want to know, so I believe the Leland County Boarders deserve an answer to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You've had a long day today.
I'm Harry Stephens, resident of Leland Township, precinct, there we go. And something you may not know, I was a missionary. I did mission work in Paqueta, New Guinea. I stood up to the corrupt church and government in Paqueta, New Guinea. Asked me about it sometime at the active share that we did. What I want to do though is I want to read something. I'd call it a prayer, but for those unbelievers in the crowd, call it what you want. Call it a wish list to my fairy godmother if you want to. Anyway, let me read this. Heavenly Father, Lord of nations, as we consider the deplorable condition our country is in, we pray that you be with us and help us to restore our nation to its constitutional roots, support us in defending our liberties, and give us and those we have entrusted with the authority of the government the spirit of wisdom. Give our representatives, commissioners, and others in authority discernment hearts so that they hope for those things that are right and just and beneficial for all. Open their eyes to the corruption in our voting system and return us to honor and fair elections with one-day voting and hand-counted paper ballots. Be with our teachers and help them to see the evils of CRT and woke agendas. Remove racism, homosexuality, transgender, pornography from our schools. Encourage our teachers to exercise their right to free speech and religion by opening their classes with prayer and a pledge of allegiance, and encourage them to exercise their right to bear arms to defend themselves and our students. We awaken your people to a commitment to justice, the sanctity of marriage and family, to the dignity of each individual life, and to the undeniable truth that human rights begin when a human life begins and not one moment later. Lordly, humbly pray that you will forgive our nation for its many sins and heal our land, restore our nation to the God-fearing constitutional republic that it once was. Lordly, ask that you bless us, keep us, and guide us so that all our decisions on all we do will be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
My name is Keith Badum, resident of the White House. What I want to say is that when we do the pledge of allegiance, there's a lot of that means to that. Number one, it states that we are a republic. We are not a democracy, we are a republic, and the Constitution and the amendments are based on that. So we need to understand that we are a republic. We are one nation under God. We are not one nation under the WEF or the WHO. We are not. And myself and millions of other people will not accept anything but being a republic.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We will have a second public comment session at the end of our meeting. Thank you for coming this evening. Any commissioner comments at this time?
We had a wonderful senior expo today.
We did. Congratulations to the senior services staff and all the staff that were involved.
Do we have a number of attendees yet? Any idea?
I know they had 500 lunches, and they were all on.
Fantastic.
It was wonderful to see everyone out.
Yeah, sure was. Well, thank you. At this time, we're moving down in our agenda to communications, proclamations, and presentations, and we'll start with our administrator update.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'll reiterate Commissioner Alguier's comments and Commissioner Lautner's. I want to thank those of the commissioners that made the time to be there today to volunteer or to attend the event. Special kudos out to our senior services commission or senior services group and staff. That leads right into senior services director. I do have a press release, and I wanted to notify the Board of Commissioners that we have hired another individual that will start on July 17th. And that individual is Lena Vander Mullen. Lena has been selected as the future senior services director for Leland County. She is a resident of Sutton's Bay, and this position will be vacated by April Messiah in mid-July to initiate her geriatric counseling services. So it's a very noble position why she leaves us. It's for a very positive reason. And so this opens up the opportunity for us to welcome Lena into this position. So Lena has been serving for over a decade at the Leland County, sorry, I just want to get this right, at Metallodge, and she's had a variety of different positions. She's a certified therapist, in terms of physical therapist, so she's done direct patient care. She also, and she has a degree in that, and then she also has been working in administration, working her way up as an activities director, the whole way up to the admissions director. So she brings a great skill set, great deal of knowledge, is a Leland County resident, and I think she'll do an amazing job. So I'm excited to share that information with the board. Also on my list today, just want to kind of give you a couple other project updates. We did meet with the architects and engineers regarding the lower-level Health Department Environmental Division. That project will be rebid, and we anticipate having the bids back in July for the board to consider. So that scale of that project has been scaled down just a little bit, the scope has been scaled down, so we're hoping that we'll be within the target of our dollars for that. And then our HVAC two and three, pending RFPs in July, will be, the bids will be back to the board in August for consideration on that project as well. Couple upcoming events, Wednesday, July 12th, or the afternoon on July 19th, we're looking at a committee of the whole regarding the county policies. So I'll get this communication out with dates so the board can consider those dates. Tuesday, July 18th, from three to four, we will have a county employee elected official ice cream social. So that is an opportunity for the board to participate in that. Directly following that, we'll have the BPW meeting, and then that evening will be our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So we'll sugar you up and then let you attend the board meeting. And then Tuesday, August 8th, we'll be completing the budget documents to the board or providing them to the board, so that will start our budget planning process. So a lot of things happening, a lot of good things. So just wanted to kind of give you all an update on a couple of those items.
Any questions for Deb before we move on? Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. I want to thank the clerk for helping us with the, with these agenda items, or not agenda items, but action items and motions. This is something that she had shared that she had done in the past, and so I think this will all be incredibly helpful to all of us as we move forward. So six months in, I think this will make all of our lives a lot easier. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Well, now we move down to our second presentation, and it's my pleasure to introduce Beth Verhey. Beth comes to us from working around the world on children's poverty issues with UNICEF and, and social policy agencies all over. She's now involved, I think, with the Early Childhood Investment Corporation in the state of Michigan. And ever since Bridge Magazine put out the Poverty in Paradise article about 10 years ago, this Board of Commissioners have each year had an update on children and families in poverty in the Alice. And Beth is here today to give us an overview of this year's update. So thanks, Beth.
So yes, perhaps one caveat as I'm here, a pro bono volunteer. I have not had any professional relationship with this, with the Alice DNR or other sources, but have become very impressed with it in terms of really capturing a picture of the challenges our majority of our households, as we can say, face, and what seem underlying issues are to guide policy in terms of where to focus efforts and check away at. I think a lot of you are already familiar, so I'll try to breeze over some of the basic rules of Alice and what's behind it. And I have three slides, and that's way too much data to cover in less than 10 minutes, so I can provide more, but I'm only going to make some highlights in terms of actual presentation. So the Alice acronym stands for Asset-Committed-Income-Constrained-Employed. And sometimes it was important to start at the back of that in terms of employed and income constrained. And what the data team really has been focusing on, I'll turn to that on the second slide, is tracking a more granular sort of sense of basic household costs than have captured in the consumer prices at that time. So they try to issue reports every two years, and here it's about a month ago been a data update. So this is the first opportunity we have to look at post-pandemic realities for our struggling households. A lot of that is data that was captured in 2021, and then there are a couple of supplemental surveys they're able to layer that goes late as November 22, 2022. So I'm sure you're not surprised that through the pandemic, there is not good news. We continue to have a very high proportion of our households that not made family. Really, the reality of paycheck to paycheck, one emergency, one car repair, one unexpected health expense away from really basic hardship. And what's different than the federal poverty level is that these households are then not eligible for most of the programs that are structured either at the federal level or at the state level. So briefly, I wanted to capture quickly that our 2023 figure for Leland County is that 46% of our households are below the Alice threshold. And on the next slide, we'll go into what those thresholds are. That is an increase from the year before, or two years before, which was pre-pandemic pay over 40%. You can see in that yellow band on the first slide, we have, we'll stay here until I have the fourth slide, that compared to our other Grand River State area counties were quite a bit higher than the rest of them. Michigan's level overall is at 39%. And the part that is the mitten and those blue gradients is particularly sobering. It shows that we are the county with the highest cost of living in the entire state of Michigan. of Michigan. So that bar graph across the bottom is showing what those gradients represent in terms of a survival budget for a family of four where both children are not yet in the marriage. And the reddish graph is trying to capture the data for you on our township level. Two years ago, only Kesson and Leland were at that 50% level, 50 and 52. So it really, it's really sobering how across the county these figures have gotten worse. So yeah, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Overall, I like to frame this as the middle class has disappeared. There is such a high proportion of our working or seniors on limited income that are struggling to make ends meet, it is no longer, no longer available that can make those ends meet. The, and the blue line there is really the bottom line of the story that this national Alice team has been tracking. They established something they call the Essentials Index and have been tracking a set of six core household expense categories since the Great Recession, which is the 2007, '08, '09 financial crisis. And they show that since then, those prices have increased by 3.4% compared to Consumer Price Index, increasing by 1.8%. A big part of that is that the CPI covers more than 200 categories of goods and services. So things that have declines in prices or hold really steady are averaged into everything else. Whereas the Essentials Index focuses on the six categories that you can maybe kind of read in the bar graph there of housing, food, childcare, transportation, utilities, and I'm really missing one off the top of my head. The other thing that's interesting about the difference is that the CPI, the data set, sample set is 38 urban statistical areas, whereas the Essentials Index tracks things for all 3,000 counties in the United States. So it's capturing things at a much more granular level and really helps to tailor things to, into county by county level. Overall, let's see what else you want to highlight here. I don't want to go through each, this is showing they present the data for four types of households and showing this for number eight, and then showing this for four in terms of capturing it for a slide. And I just, on the right hand there, put in a few cross-references to get a sense of how really local examples and even more updated data correlate to where they set these thresholds. So I think we're all been reading plenty of news about the housing prices. Our home price to income ratio is now 5.5. That's at New York City levels. I looked at some average daily costs at main childcare centers, childcare facilities here, and that price is more than the budget figure that we provide. The average is about $1,300 per month for a child. And the data about food insecure is about six months old. That other poll surveys, the other data tracking food insecure shows that we are 40% of our households that are food insecure. That figure in terms of the budgets has gone up the most, even though I think we hear more about housing compared to level than that when I find this to be. Go ahead and go to the last slide. This, I think, is a, was a really interesting example exercise that the Alice team did and sort of a special section in terms of the report. So the Michigan-level full narrative report is out, but not yet things in a more narrative form that we can at our local level. It's still rolling out. But they, it really shows how the pandemic-level assistance helped households survive. So what you're seeing in those green blocks are the various pandemic-related income supports that families depending on category would receive and how they stack up against the blue bar being the components of this survival budget. Four again, a family of four with two children in childcare. And it shows that for two full-time workers, those green additions that they add to their income through their various stimulus supports helped them survive. And they close to survival were based on if they were actually part-time positions. And these are Michigan figures or, you know, calculated for retail and other similar type of jobs. We still have over 70% of our jobs and we should be able to pay less than $20 an hour. So that really does capture a basic reality for many of our local families. And then it raises the question that these, all of these programs have ended just about now. So we can't look backwards yet in terms of data and how they find ways to make up for those income supports that they have when the inflationary increased cost of living are not going back down. So I think we're really going to be facing a more challenging period in the next couple of years, which is very sobering. And this wasn't, you know, I didn't share an update. It's really important to maintain a level of awareness as commissioners and everyone in our community, the range of support these families need. And yes, go ahead and lightly say, you know, I can't help myself but ask, you know, what to do. And certainly, some things to do are to maintain what we're already doing indeed on our senior services and what's happening with your childhood mileage, what the Land Bank Authority is doing. We have really good food banks. We have some excellent programs. The NCA programs are good. But I think it's going to take local, I mean, a really localized study and reflection to identify other opportunities. A couple of examples are starting to come out in reporting uses of our funds and all of ours are allocated, and so that's not an option. But there are a couple of locations that are piloting basic income programs pivoting from realizing the importance especially of that early childhood, the child income tax credit in particular, that's addressing child poverty. City of Ann Arbor is doing it, and there's, we've covered 100 families for two years. And there's a northern national organization called Park Together that I am hearing has identified a partner in the city area for also a small pilot. I think there would be examples to look at, really hoping to find ways to study and identify opportunities.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions or comments on Beth's update?
I just wanted to comment. You said $1,300. I think that's fairly accurate, having two children. Just so everyone understands, that's $31,200 for two kids in daycare per year. So it's significant. That's it.
Anything else?
Do you think that the differential for Leland is our housing costs?
Housing and food.
Thank you very much, Beth. Thanks for challenging us.
No, it wasn't until about the 70s. Housing wasn't expensive in Leland County until about the 70s. That's when Leland got discovered.
Yeah, it was also been a recent report that we're the wealthiest county in the state of Michigan. Well, yeah. They're looking at different.
Unfortunately, that doesn't.
Beth, thank you for, thank you for always looking at this data and what you're doing. Thank you. We are now down to our consent agenda. And before we make a decision on that, I'd like to read a statement for the public on that. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second. And these have all been discussed at length at last week's executive committee meeting. Is there anybody that, yes, Doug?
I was going to make a motion. I'm sorry you got to ask it, but I would move that the consent agenda items be approved absent item number two as previously amended.
All those in support of that motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. We are now down then to action item, and we're down to number 12 on our agenda. Human Resources Probate Court Staffing Request.
Sure. So this request was submitted by Judge Kromkowski at our executive committee session. And this is basically requesting that we increase the hours for the deputy probate register position to, from 28 hours a week, which is part-time, to 35 hours full-time position. And I think that the motion that was offered last week basically said that it was an approval of that request and for approximately $5,500 for the duration of 2023 and a commitment to consider a full-time position as we look at the upcoming budget process. That did not have a seven zero vote. I believe it was six one, so we're bringing it back to the board for discussion.
Commissioner Alguayer.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the current 28-hour work-part-time deputy probate register position be increased to a 35-hour full-time position effective immediately, amounting to a probate court budget amendment of approximately $5,500 for the duration of 2023 and for the consideration of a full-time deputy probate register in upcoming budget discussions.
Support. Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion approved, six one. We're now down to the Leland Township Tower issue. Do you want to introduce that?
So item number 13A on the agenda is related to the Cherryland Electric Agreement. So this was submitted last week, again, to the executive committee and back to the board. We were pulling one of those items off for legal counsel, but there was no concern by legal counsel regarding this particular agreement.
Commissioner Roth.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the tower space lease agreement for Cherryland Electric Cooperative at the Central Tower, Government Center Tower, Omena Tower, and the proposed Leland Township Tower, and authorize the county board chairman to sign the agreement pending approval from corporate counsel.
Support. Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approved.
One of the same.
Thank you. Motion approved, six zero with one extension. Now the tower construction bid.
So as part of the project, the project costs were bid out and the bid came back in within the confines of the targets that we had set. And so it's proposed that we move forward with the bid approval process with Midway
Looking for a motion. Commissioner Lautner?
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners award the Leland Township Tower project bid to Midway Electronics in the amount of $405,500 and approve the agreement pending corporate counsel review.
Support. Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. Now we're at the landowner lease agreement.
And so the final component of the tower construction regarding this project is an agreement with Brian and Kelly Mitchell property lease agreement to have the tower on their property. This is similar to other lease agreements that we currently have in play in the county. And I believe there was a question at the last week's meeting in regards to the, any legal concerns with this agreement, and legal had weighed in yesterday, so, or weighed in, and I shared that information with the board yesterday. So there was no concerns in terms of any lease agreement per se regarding Cherryland Electric. So other than the potential of having something addressed in the lease agreement.
Commissioner Resrow.
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the land lease agreement for the Leland Township Tower project between Leland County and Brian and Kelly Mitchell, and authorize the county board chairman to sign the agreement pending corporate counsel review and approval and landowner lease addendum as recommended by council.
Support. Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. And when the tower project is finished, there's a lot of people in Leland Township that will call you and thank you.
They can't right now.
Right. Not the least of which who is seated at the end of the table over there.
We're now down to item 14 on the agenda, Travers Transportation Coordinating Initiative. Deb?
Correct. So at last Tuesday's meeting, there was a resolution that was shared with the commissioners regarding the establishment of the intermunicipality committee under Michigan Public Act. And so this is in essence to address the MPO that has been proposed by MDOT for our urban area or metropolitan area, I suppose, of which Leland County has a segment of that in Elmwood Township, Bingham Township, is reflected in support through the Leland County Road Commission, and also with Leland County's involvement with the Airport Authority and also BETA. So we have initiated the process to have a seat at the table regarding this, acknowledging our involvement with this initiative.
Commissioner Kramer.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners to approve Leland County Resolution 2023 Resolution to Establish an Intermunicipality Committee under Michigan Public Act 200 of 1957 for the purposes of transportation planning in the Travers Study Area as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there needs to be a roll call vote for this since it's just a resolution.
Any, before we, before we call a roll on that resolution, any discussion or questions? Okay. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel, or Chairman Wessel? Sorry. Commissioner Alguayer?
Yes.
Six one.
Thank you. We are now down to item 15, the late addition request of VA approval of three county veteran service fund grant applications. We were all sent that information in the mini-package that Laurel sent out last Thursday or Friday. Anybody have a motion to make? Gwen?
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorize the submission of fiscal year 2024 county veterans. of fiscal year 2024 county veteran service fund grant applications to the Michigan Veteran Affairs Agency as presented, along with fiscal year 24 project budget amendment.
Support.
Before we have any discussion, if there is any, there was a change in the wording from our EDS on that, from the wording we saw in the packet, I think. Can you speak to that?
Well, I don't think conceptually there was anything that changed with the application. I know that, Michelle, you had spoke specifically with Michael Rupp today just to get clarification. So can you share too what your conversation was?
Sure. There's three proposals. It's the same grant that we had last year. We are going to make some minor, nothing that changes what you saw, but there are some corrections that need to be made. He also submitted a fiscal year 2024 budget amendment that a new copy did come through today. It's to amend that up, asking for $12,000 in each of the categories, and that also does require approval. So that is what the slight changes, but based what you saw in the context, it's all the same. But there are some housekeeping errors or issues we have to clean up.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion or any questions on that? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion approved, seven zero. We're down to our last late addition request, number two, the planning approval of rural readiness grant application. And do you want to speak to that?
So this is part of the rural readiness grant. We submitted a letter of intent previously at the board's approval. So that is in regards to a request for up to $50,000 for a grant writer that would be used by a variety of different county departments. And so if we are granted these funds, which now that we received the letter or we submitted the letter of intent and it has been accepted, now we need to move forward with an application. So that's the next step in this process. And we can apply for up to $50,000, of which the county would be committed to pay 20%. So if we are allotted the full $50,000, that would equate to approximately $10,000 to establish a grant writer for the county.
Mr. Russ.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorize the submission of the MDOT Rural Readiness Grant Program application in support of a county grant writer in the amount of $50,000.
Support.
Commissioner Kramer seconded, I think. Commissioner Lotner?
Yeah, I guess my only concern with this is that this is for one year. It's not for like if we use them for draw it down as far as like if they use $5,000 to write a grant until the end of the $50,000. It's just to bring them on to write grants as an employee.
I think that that would be something that we would have to look at. From the standpoint, you know, there certainly is the opportunity for us to contract with a grant writer as opposed to perhaps an employee position. We could see how if we had a contracted agreement, then we could see how useful that was and how much it would then be able to help us determine if that made sense to establish a position going forward.
If we, I use, if we apply for the grant, though, can it be done with a contractual employee and not a county employee? Do they have to be a county employee, or can we use that many? We don't have the answer to that yet.
I don't have the answer to that, but I'm, I don't, I have not heard anything that would oppose that from the standpoint that was part of the the letter of intent was either to hire or contract with.
Okay, so this will be just applying for the grant.
Correct.
So we would get those answers before we accept the grant if we're awarded. Fair enough. Okay.
Jim, should the motion include that we would be liable for the 20%? Or is it just in the grant, just, you know, so as it is out in the open?
Would not hurt to include that. Just so you know also, that 10% can be allocated by things such as other than just wages or the contractual.
In-kind?
Things like in-kind. So electricity or whatever types of services might be included in that.
You comfortable with that, Jim?
Yes, sir, I am.
Any other questions, concerns? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven zero. And thank you. I think Trudy was the one that did the background work on that. So thank you, Trudy. We now are at review of financials. Kathy?
Yeah. I have no more further questions. Kathy, Jen, Michelle, I'll answer it. I'll make questions before the meeting, so I don't know if anybody else has any others. Were there, if there was nothing else we were going to look at, was there? We got through them. Okay, then I'm all set.
Anybody else? Thank you. You got it off this time.
Nice report.
We're now down to committee reports, recommendations, and resolutions. Anybody?
Is this Commissioner comment?
This is committee reports.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're now down to special reports by staff, commissioners, or affiliated agencies.
I believe there's a comment by our minister.
Yes. Thank you. Sean's finishing his or starting his third week. Thank you, Sean.
I just wanted to take a minute to update, follow me up on the board of commissioners, executive committee session last week on 6/13. There's discussion during the readout of the audit findings regarding some questions you had on MERS. We did have a meeting this week with Cohen, who is our regional representative. I think a lot of them may know him. I think we had a good discussion regarding our plan, its performance, and some of future expectations. And I think the action item maybe to consider going forward. Deb mentioned the thought around upcoming budget discussions kind of getting off. So I think there's a timing consideration, but I think there's options also with MERS directly to engage, to go deeper into some of those questions. And so I think those options would include Tony mentioned in the past finance committee discussion to go deeper, or if your preference is more of a committee get a hold. But I just wanted to throw this out as something that to consider potentially in the next one percent as we start to win the process.
Thank you. Any comments from board? I'm sure we'll want to do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. We're now down to our last public comment section of the agenda. If anybody would like to make public comments, you are welcome to raise your hand at this time. And these, this public comment is limited to five minutes.
I'm from Schimmick, Houston delegate from Kansas Township. I don't have anything really prepared that I'm going to read to you, so it's awful tough. But I have my heart and my head. Many times people come to the table talking about elections. And I'm here with that same concern. And I hope that what you're hearing isn't just falling on deaf ears, because it's not that, it's not, we're not looking at Leland County specifically. We're looking at our country. Last week, Thursday, we had a gathering of over 70 people who heard a man speak. His name was Patrick Kolbeck. And I think that some of you may have been given a book that he wrote called The 2020 Coup. His opening statement when he began speaking to this group of 70 concerned people was, "This is nonpartisan. It has nothing to do with your political affiliation. This is a problem in elections in general. It's a matter of who you're, where you stand on whatever the issues are of the person you is. It's not that. It is a matter of people and companies and things being involved in our elections." That he, his story was about political odds. And there are people behind the curtain that are controlling these that we have no idea of. And he, so he was, this Patrick Kolbeck was a Wayne County Senator, Senator from Wayne County in 2012, was a candidate for governor in 2018. So he has a political background, but he's also a NASA engineer, a electronics engineer. So his, what he had to deliver to us was very interesting, eye-opening, and made you want to just look. And that's what I'm asking you is just not to, to just, I want you to consider that there's a possible problem. I listened to a documentary today. It was from a county clerk in Mesa County, Colorado. And after, and I'm not referring to any specific election, but it started in her office after the 2020 election. People that put her in office were coming to the office expressing concerns, much like you've been hearing for months here. And she said, "I felt it was my duty as the county clerk," she said, she knew, you know, she, "I have nothing, I'm doing everything as I should. I'm nothing, I'm not worried about anything." But the more people expressed concern, she thought, "I need to take this seriously because I'm representing these people, working for these people, and for my country." So it was after a more disamunicipal election of county commissioners, not county commissioners, but city commissioners, where it was a panel of seven people that were on the ballot or more. But there were four individuals that were, that just didn't make the grade, in her opinion. And, you know, as the campaign was going on, and those four individuals won. And so when I said that this is a nonpartisan idea, think about the proposals last year, how overwhelmingly they passed or failed. Abortion, where Michigan has one of the most lenient abortion laws in the country, and it passed, you know, more than it should have. The same thing with elections. We're going to have nine. Do we really think that a majority, the vast majority of the people thought it was appropriate to have an election going, of course, at nine days? It just, those kinds of things that had nothing to do with what political affiliation you have. But everybody voted, and it just, sometimes there are things that we looked at. So this is what happened to this lady in Mesa County. And she discovered things that were out of her control because of the electronic machines that we're using. So there are things that can be done that nobody's guilty of sitting in this room, except we may be guilty of not thinking that this is possible. And I believe that it is possible. We're not election deniers. We're just concerned that when we vote, our votes are counted. And Ms. Patrick Kolbeck, when he spoke last week, you know, the argument sometimes is well, it takes too much time to do pay the ballots. And he had in his presentation exactly to work down the time, how much time it would take to count a thousand ballots. And in the end, if that's what's going, and it was very reasonable and very reasonably done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Bill?
Just go to your seat and sit down. Again, we're dealing with this over and over. Simply, no fraud, black box machines, especially the ones described in this report in Georgia. Phil is, by the way, on the township. It just shows so much vulnerability. So simply one person, one ballot, one vote, one... As you go along with what Linda just shared, Dr. Buck Lindell shares, there's different camera views. There's a P cam, some people laugh about it, Dennis McBurney. Shows every county in the country, basically, watched the votes somehow through manipulating with computers. And then there's the fingerprints of fraud, which gave me the hand up, but I didn't really get to it last week. Jeff O'Donnell, and he shows like 81% of the counties, 18 different counties in nine different states, showed definite, the Mesa report counts, where it's high on, in this case, Democrat on the bottom at the beginning for about a third of it, and then it goes up to where it should be. And it should be just like rolling a dice. It fluctuates quite a bit at the beginning, and then it's a straight line. We got this line climbing up like this until climbing to where it should be in 81% of the counties. That's a second camera view. The third camera view is Dr. Douglas G. Franks. He's getting all this false data. No, he takes the census data from the US Census. He takes the population data and, oh wait, that would be the population, registered voters and ballots cast from the state. And he can predict how many people, how many ballots are going to be cast in every county in Michigan, in like the same age, 20-year-olds, same percentage in every county. That's not natural. That's happening by computers. So it just goes along with what Linda said. And the back page, you get, this is Alex Holderman reporting. And by the way, this started in 2016, when then it was the Democrats that were concerned about this. You have Kamala Harris and all the major Democrats speaking very loudly about it, and they suddenly went silent. Now, how much comfort does that give you in that? Very concerned, not so concerned now. I wonder why, you know? And, but anyway, Alex Holderman, he was left. And he said at the bottom of that footnote, "I have repeatedly offered to meet with Dominion, but have yet to be taken up with this offer." All of those concerns and this quiet, you know? You just look up the Holderman findings, and going to the table of contents towards the beginning, it mentions threat actors, proof of concept attacks, manipulating the ballots via the ICX printer, defeating QR codes, authenticating, demonstrates hardware-based attack, attacks against ICX smart cards, forging technician cards, themselves malware, creating infinite voter cards, as many as they want, instructing ICX malware again, modifying the ICX app to change your votes, defeating applicable defenses, attacking USB devices in the ICX, accessing a root shell via the built-in terminal app. The root is where you have total control. Manual malware installation process, automating malware installation, local malware installation using forged technician cards. I mean, it goes on and on. Directory, transversal, vulnerability, manipulating laws and protection colors, vulnerable storage design. He said, "These computers were not designed with security in mind." He doesn't think he could really fix them. They were just so complicated. 2.1 million lines of code into Dominion voting machines. And again, we have the same machines Georgia has, but they're just using them a little bit differently down there where they're required to use them a certain way. So, oh yeah, and 62% of the people in the country, plus or minus 3%, Rasmussen poll, April, say they thought the 2020 election was thrown by fraud. And 50% of the Democrats believe that we're not doing enough to fix it. We want our Congress to be leaders. There's no downside. We have cameras. We have ballots that you can see. If you shine a light on it, you get all this background. It's like, wow, where'd that come from? So it shows they can't just print them. And it's just so easy to fix. And we've got to get rid of these early ballot clocks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
John?
Hello, John Harwell, Subs Magazine. I need five minutes. I said that before. And I'm going to reiterate that there are no irregular actions, no regularities in counting, certified handling ballots in this county. And again, anyone who thinks otherwise is wildly misinformed or...Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to, this is not what we said, because I've got, this is my house. I did an audit on it in the MERS database, and it doesn't have a mortgage on it. But when I go into the MERS database, I find they have two active mortgages. I just have to put a different version of the address to find the active mortgages. So now this ties into the voting. I'm looking at this mortgage, and I went to the register of deeds and actually got it. It is registered on my home. It is a mortgage of Adelberts and Beverly Coper. When I went to look up their records for voting in the qualified voter file, I found that Adelberts and Beverly both voted in Leland Township in 2009 and 2010 as absentee voters. You'll see right here, that they didn't move there until 2016. So I'm going to go up the entire street, the Eagle Highway, and do the same thing. I'm going to be looking at their mortgages, especially people who moved. People who moved, their records and the voting get moved too. So we have falsification of records in the mortgages here. Two active mortgages on my house. I sent this to the Attorney General. She says she doesn't have, almost yet, she sent it to the Department of Insurance and Financial Services, and they don't have jurisdiction over MERS. And MERS is putting mortgages on my house that doesn't have mortgage. And this guy's vote is falsified. This is a falsified record. And then we have, I have both of the mortgages that are on my house. Molly Robner, I just found out today, her mortgage is registered in the Wall Street database, called MERS Mortgage Registration System, on my house. And I've been looking for this mortgage for about a year. As I went to the register of deeds and found it, that it's my next neighbor's porch, it's registered on my house, it doesn't have mortgage on it. So we've got far more problems than just voter fraud. We have mortgage fraud. And it appears that the two databases are interface. So that's all I have to say about that. But I will be continuing to catalog both the data fraud or mortgage fraud and voter fraud to see if there's a relationship. And there appears to be a relationship, especially for closed properties. Those are being, their voter records are being moved, are being purged from the records. So I don't know why that is, but there is something like that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Yes, Mr. McCoskey?
Good evening. Just a note, we let each of you, the Wall Street Journal, the Verizon. My personal belief is that you let private sector do the job. You want large companies trying to find government money, it's not really worth it. So money, if they're willing to throw money at them, they'll literally accept it and postpone the party. We continue on the May 5th, May 11th, 2021 issue, helping argue for legal mafiaism of moral syndicates, Moral Code. We don't talk about morality very much anymore. In fact, the writer says he doesn't discuss it, because it sounds churchy. And some claim they're secular or spiritual, or this is what we might call a moral code. It is a handful of essential virtues when we practice, when we practice, facilitate social harmony and material abundance. Their emphasis is on practice. While most private and moral code are not universal, there is present on agriculture. Morality is a big tree. Morality, especially in America, has a panache. So we need to talk about it again. Consider the big tree of the moral code. Don't harm, don't steal, don't lie. The big three are politics. And this applies directly to the current voting project of the county commissioners here. Politics has its own big three. Don't harm, steal, and lie. Politics is anti-moral that we have here in this case, just like the mafia. Listen to these tactics and terrorize political actors, which we have a lot of early actors that did that on the 2021. Yet most people will acknowledge this reality. If we employ their imagination, such as the inability to see how things could be otherwise, most people will set up ways to justify unjust authority. And as far as I'm concerned, that May 11th was an abuse of authority. It continues to be a use of authority.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Thank you all for coming this evening. Any Commissioner comment? Yes.
I have one. The online sports betting guy, just named Traverse City, is cocaine capital of the United States. Yeah, that's right. Here's the article.
I read it too.
When you work narcotics, you can't do it from a patrol car. You know, having worked at three tours, if T and D comes in here, the sheriff and the fantastic prosecutor that we have asks for more help for working undercover, please support it. I mean, if we stop drugs in Traverse City, if we stop drugs in Westford County, that's drugs that didn't get up to lead around county. And, you know, it's just, it's a great program they have. They all work well together. Tristan, the assistant prosecutor, we're doing a fine job, but we need to stay on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I've been a resident of Leland County for over 10 years. And I would like to say that somebody mentioned that we should be leaders. We are leaders. And we are led. Our voting system is led by one of the most experienced and ethical clerks in the state of Michigan, Michelle Crocker. And I am proud of that, that, that we are leaders and that we are providing our residents with a safe and secure way to cast their votes. So, thank you.
Or, I don't know, the motion? Gwen?
I would heartily agree with that. I've taken her training. I've sat in on elections for years. We have an excellent, excellent voting system here. So I agree with you. We also, for next, for July's meetings, there is, there are a lot of grants, and I do hope that we get that grant writer. There are a lot of grants. There is money right now for energy efficiency, energy projects. And I, I want to, Leland ought to be a leader in that area as well. And if there are things that we can do, let's do them while the money and the opportunity is here. So we can look for that on the July agenda.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Well, then we're down to approval of financials. Yes, Commissioner Lotner?
Yes, I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve claims and accounts in the amount of $394,730.78.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve post-audit claims and accounts in the amount of $5,145,376.27.
Support.
All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
I move to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Full support.
Yeah, yeah.